Presented by the Southern Nash News and Tar River Studios. Tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency. The Spring Hope License Plate Agency is recently under new management and features short lines and a friendly staff. Dealer work is always welcome, notary services are available, and copies can always be made. Wildlife services, hunting and fishing licenses, boat registrations, and boat title work is also available. Visit the Spring Hope License Plate Agency on Ash Street five days a week, Monday through Friday, nine o'clock to five o'clock. Once again, tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency.
All right, welcome, everybody. It's six fifty-nine, so about time I finish this sentence, it'll be seven o'clock if we're ready to get started. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being out here, it's great to see so many faces. It's good to see that we've got a crowd out here. Thank you all for coming. So, we're gonna call the meeting to order, and the first item on the agenda tonight is pledge allegiance. While I stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Pastor Scott, if you will open us in a word of prayer, please, sir.
Sir. If you'd like to participate, if you would bow your heads and pray with me. Dear the Father, Lord God, we come to you, Lord, tonight. God, we ask your will of this meeting to happen. God, we're asking the one that created the universe, God, the one that created the world, God, we're asking you, Lord, who sent your son and died for us, God, we're asking you, Lord, God, who did all these great things, to do something so simple as to make your will be done tonight. Lord God, we ask that you would bless the leadership, Lord God, of our mayor, and, Lord God, the voting power of our commissioners, Lord God, that they would vote the correct way, Lord God, that they would approve what needs to be approved, Lord God, and put down what needs to be stopped. Lord God, we thank you so much for all the participation here tonight throughout this town, Lord God, for the folks to come out, Lord God, and let their voices be heard and to realize what's happening, God. Lord, we thank you for your hand of blessing over Spring Hope, Lord, and, God, we ask that you would again bless this meeting, Lord, that your will would be done. Lord God, we thank you for hearing us, Lord God, for it's such a blessing that you hear our prayers, Lord God, but yet we know also that you answer our prayers, for you love us so much. God, you're never not on time, Lord God, we know that you're gonna answer us right on time, Lord God, for that is who you are. So, Lord God, be on time in this meeting today, and, Lord, we thank you so much, and we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Next item on the agenda, setting the agenda. Commissioners, thank you all for being here tonight, thanks for your packet. Is tonight's agenda, would any of you like to add anything to the agenda? Okay. All right. Also in your packets in the front, you have the minutes from last month's meeting, and if there are no, let me give you guys just a second to review them, and if you guys have any questions on last month's meeting minutes. All right, if there are no questions for last month's minutes, can we get a motion to pass tonight's agenda and the minutes as written?
Motion to approve minutes as written in meeting agenda.
All in favor say aye, all opposed. Motion carries, last month's meeting minutes and tonight's agenda have been approved. All right, next on tonight's agenda is the informal discussion and public comment section. This is one of my favorite parts of the meeting, because I really love listening to what the residents have to say, so I'm glad to see so many faces up here. This is the time we set aside during our meeting to listen to you all, to hear from you. We want to know your concerns, suggestions, and praises when we get stuff right, and I encourage you all to sign up and talk with us. If you're not aware of the procedure to speak during the public comment section, you just email Michelle, or if you want to just let your commissioner know, or your mayor, town manager, they can connect you with Michelle. She'll put you on the agenda to speak. If you would like to speak, I do ask that when you come up, if you will please state your name and your address for the record, and the topic that you wish to speak on. And this is so that we can follow up with you guys' concerns. I believe in accountability, and I think it's important that we follow up with you. So, with that, our first to speak tonight is County Manager, Ms. Schatzer. Ms. Schatzer, floor is yours.
Thank you, and I just wanted to share some of my business cards with the board. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Manager, Attorney, Clerk. Coming for you this evening is your new county manager. As of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, I became the new Nash County Manager. I am here just to introduce myself, make myself familiar to you visually, and let you know that I have been with the county for over twenty-one years. I've got experience in aging services, and energy management, and parks and recreation, and in administration since twenty seventeen. So, I just wanted to come and introduce myself, and say hello, and welcome you, Mr. Manager, in your new role as well, and if there's anything that the county can do to assist Spring Hope, please don't hesitate to reach out. I know the mayor and I have already been in contact about a couple of topics and making some connections, so hopefully we can follow through on those and make some good progress as we move forward in the future, but I just wanted to come and introduce myself this evening.
Did you used to live here?
I did use to live here. There's a special place in my heart for Spring Hope. The log home behind Peachtree Baptist Church is where I moved in twenty and in two thousand. My first home in North Carolina, actually, so special place in my heart, for sure.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new role.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you, and a lot of your departments have already started working with us, so I'm, I know Town Attorney's is working with Town Attorney's, Economic Development with the development community, and so you guys are just, you know, helping us so much. I really appreciate all the help that you brought, bringing to our whole town. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of seasoned professionals that work for the county, so please don't hesitate to reach out and use the resources that we have available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Robin.
Hi.
Hello? How are you tonight?
I'm fine. I'm Robin Biedorn. I live at six hundred Walnut Court, and I've been in contact with a few of you over our concerns over our neighborhood. In the drainage, we've always had a wet, when we just talked to my daughter, we've always had poor drainage issues in that area. It's always been wet. I've lived there seven years, it's always been wet. However, when they started the development of Walnut Cove, which none of us knew until they actually started, I should say, the majority of us did not know, until they actually started clearing the land that was being put in, so we never had a chance to voice our concerns over how that would affect us as a neighborhood. So, as the land was being, they're building the development and building a truckload and truckload and truckload of dirt, raising it so much higher, the concern came with runoff. When I first addressed the issue, I felt like I was actually placated, because we are on the, probably the lowest piece of land in the neighborhood, and was basically told I needed to fill my land in. I live on the corner of two cul-de-sacs, the water is down to a little cul-de-sac. To refill that land in is not advantageous, because the water's running off of my land anyways, because we're at the bottom of the hills, of the two small hills. However, when the running water was going through my neighbor's yard, and we have pictures of the actual running water coming from there, people started, I mean, you guys started paying attention. We have videos of it, and we're taking it a little more seriously, and I know reports have been made to the county, and no reports have been made to the state. I was told a silt fence was installed, but however, the concern has never been silt, the concern has been the amount of water that is coming into our land, our properties. We were also told the final grading, we're detouring the water into the streets of the new subdivision, but when I contacted, I was when I contacted Thad Valentine at the North Carolina Department of Environmental Control, the actual quote I got was increased runoff was an unavoidable result of economic growth. So, we are concerned, this water is coming into our land. We want some kind of insurance, or some kind of assurance or something, that this is not going to cause more effects on our property. I lived on Main Street during Floyd, I knew this area, that area did not flood during Floyd. Our neighbors have lived there during Floyd. Now, there's a concern about the amount of water coming into the neighborhood. I really feel that we, the new development is in a priority over our already established neighborhood, and this water is now running over some of these properties prior to them building that up, and even after what I've been told about the drainage, we still are seeing truckloads and truckloads of dirt coming in. I know this is not finished. I know the development is not finished. I know there's final grading to do, but what is gonna stop the four days rain that we have forecasted this water coming in and damaging our properties? So, that is our concern, and just to go with that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak to us, I appreciate it, and this is definitely a valid concern, and it's one that we're looking into. There's gotta be a solution for every problem, there's a solution, so we just keep working on it.
Is it gonna be documented and followed up on, you know, like under Old Business?
What's that?
Is it gonna be documented and being managed under Old Business now, to be followed up on with an answer?
Yeah, I think we've been following up back and forth on it through email almost daily for the past week since we got those videos, and I know that Mr. Deon has been working really hard with all the powers that be, both the developer and with the state, to see what are possible solutions. There has to be a solution, we have to find something.
Is it gonna be documented on the minutes coming forward?
It wasn't up there last time, but can we make sure it makes all the minutes and stuff?
Yeah, did we talk about it?
We didn't talk about it. This is the first time we've talked about it.
Okay, it'll be done.
Okay.
We follow up.
Yes. Thank you.
Robin, who was that person you contacted with the state? Made you, that made that fine quote, I really like his name.
Thad Valentine, and I do have the email, and I would be glad to forward it to you from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality.
Yeah, I would like that.
There should never be a situation where economic growth takes precedence over existing residents, something I often said, they're my campaign goals, that we have to take care of who we've got first, before we try to take care of the new ones. So, it's very important, ma'am, I'm glad you did come speak tonight, I really do appreciate it. Any questions? All right, so, as you all know, there is a section on our agenda where we have public comments, it's open for you all to speak, and then once we close that, then the rest of the meeting is closed to public comment. So, at this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight during our public comment section? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I understand that they're gonna put no parkings on on Hopkins Avenue.
Yes, sir.
I got a daughter live there, she's handicapped, she need access for homeless care workers, nurses, and everything, it's only have a two-car parking there, and I have a work truck there, and I've been living there for over three years, and I don't see nothing that's changed that require no parking sign, sorry.
And there was what?
I said, I don't see nothing that's changed on the street since I lived there, that require a no parking zone except that I park in the street. Well, there's a change over the years, that you got to have it there.
I know that there's been discussions with the school system about the buses going in and out of that street, and others about safety, and it is on our agenda to discuss that tonight, and town manager, and if the commissioners want to come in, it is gonna be a discussion, and probably, it'll probably come up in about ten minutes, so if you'll please stick around. Is there, is there any specific questions or anything else you'd like to go ahead and put on the floor?
Yeah, I don't know why, why is required now, and how is my daughter gonna get her death care worker, nurses to see if you put a no parking zone there, and how are all handicap rights, it can't be parked in the yard.
So, there's a van, a handicapped accessory van, they can't get into the driveway that needs to park on the street?
It's only a two-car driver. Everything else has to be parked in the street. If you take away access to the street, even if I have people, where they gonna park? And, I mean, I've been living there over three years, and I'm still at school, been there a long time, and never had the issue with parkings in that, unless home calls and parks the problem.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out, and encourage your neighbors to come out as well, you know, and speak, this is important, and the public comment that we hear from you guys is very important.
And may I ask, what's your address?
Two oh two Hopkins.
Right House Corner.
Okay. Thank you.
If you have a no parking sign falling up from the curb, that the buses could turn, that I can, that, you know, it'll be different, but you wanna take away the whole street, and then take away access to everything.
Lot to think about, lot to consider. Thank you, dear, and it's gonna come up in just a minute. All right, so that is gonna conclude our public comment section, and so the floor will be closed to public comment for the remainder of the meeting, and we're gonna move on to section five of our agenda, which is Old Business, and this is gonna be a continuation of the appeal hearing for Ms. Brandy, the petcy regarding goats inside city limits. At this time, can we get a motion to reopen the hearing? All right, all in favor aye, all opposed? All right, I'm going to pass it over to the town attorney to see if there is any new evidence to review.
Ms. Brandy, did you wanna ask the board to consider the letter you obtained?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
All right. So, I guess, does everybody have in their packet the letter? So, in addition to the information being received in the last hearing, if we can consider that, I believe the code enforcement did not have anything else to add to the evidence tonight, I didn't know did you want to add anything? Would you want to consider these articles?
I believe so, yes.
Right, so I think you have in your packet a couple of articles.
And for the record, do you, you wanna read us the ordinance, or I'll read it real quick?
That, I don't think that's in my packet, actually.
Big packet, it seems.
Yeah, I mean, so you have a copy of the actual ordinance to consider, which says, section four point two, paragraph A, cows, horses, and other livestock, swine, goats, sheep, and other small livestock, male chickens, and seven or more hens are prohibited in any area of the town except those owned for agricultural purposes by chapter twenty-six zoning. Paragraph B, all owners of newly annexed areas have ninety days from the effective date of annexation to bring their property into compliance with this section, so that's the, that's the ordinance that governs, governs the board's actions tonight. So, I believe if Ms. Brandy doesn't have anything else to add for evidence, and other than the articles that you have, if there's something else from the town staff?
There are actually six, yes, okay, correspondences, sorry, from neighbors, Mr. Kim.
So, you have those in the packet too. So, if there's nobody else to add information to the record, then we can have a motion to close the hearing.
Before we do that, did any of the commissioners have any questions, just put us up that seat.
Ms. Brandy, how many other animals do you have that you're following?
I have red ducks.
Red ducks, yes.
And I have two cats.
Okay, so there's no additional animal, chickens, or?
I've got one here. Yeah, I have one here.
Mr. Jeffries, any question?
Nope.
All right, we need to, they don't have rabbits.
No, sir.
No rabbits or coiled.
Nope.
Okay. All right, we need to get a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion close, yeah.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second, the hearing is now closed. I'm gonna go on record saying that this is a really tough decision that commissioners have to make. Every, every month, the commissioners have a lot of weight weighing on their shoulders, and they have to make these tough decisions, so it's not easy. It impacts people's quality of life, it's a tough decision. So, I want everyone to know that they put a lot of thought into it, and I'm sure they walk in here not necessarily knowing which way they were gonna vote at this point, but it's tough, it's coming to a vote, and commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to say before we call?
Since I'm directed beside Ms. Brandy, I will refuse myself from voting on this matter.
All right. Okay, so, what we have tonight is, we are going to need a motion to uphold the code enforcement or grant the appeal regarding goats inside the city limits and the ordinance that was read by the town attorney just a minute ago. So, do we have a commissioner that would like to make a motion?
So, I just wanna say this, Ms. Brandy, obviously, I had to decide a table last month to gather more evidence, and in that time, you can see what we received, and we as commissioners and the mayor were elected to represent the citizens of Spring Hope as a whole, okay? Based on the number of complaints that there are around it, we have to think about, from my perspective, we have to think about, there are people that are working at home, the goats are making noise, you know, the other animals, I would hope that there would be another, I mean, I appreciate you providing the information, but I would hope there'd be some other companion animals, but that being said, at this time, I'm gonna make the motion to uphold the code enforcement findings and enforcement ordinance as necessary.
There's a, okay, motion on the floor, and there's a second. All in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Motion carries. That was a very tough decision, I really admire what you're doing as a mother, I think you're a great mother, and I hope that you find another animal that will offer companionship. All right, next item on the agenda is the update on ordinance regarding two oh five South Main Street. I'm gonna pass it over to town manager, Mr. Deon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to inform the board that we did asbestos testing as required by state law on the building, we did find some asbestos in some roofing materials, and we are in the process of contracting with somebody to abate the asbestos prior to demolition, so that's where we are at in the project.
Roofing materials, you mean the tin?
No, it was essentially, I'm just wondering, one of the ceiling materials.
Ceiling, that's the land in the bottom there, it must be, so. Have we put it up for video? We just got this information, probably.
Received this Thursday, so we are in the process of contracting with an abatement firm to abate the asbestos prior to demolition, but proposals are quotes for the demolition itself.
Estimated timeline?
I don't know, I contacted the man that I, that we first spoke with, and I'm just waiting on him to contact, and whether I have to get him in line, so hopefully, I'll wait for him tomorrow, and we'll have a date.
I know that that's been a big, a big topic amongst the community, and it's really exciting to see all the hard work that the commissioners, town manager, and Ms. Collins have put into it, thank you all for bringing it to an end, and finally putting it to rest, thank you all. All right, next item on the agenda is gonna be the no parking ordinance to address safety concerns that were raised by the board on Hopkins and Branch Street. So, in your packet, you have a council, a council action form.
Skip this.
All did I, okay. Let's back up. Item C, utility issues, I'm gonna pass that over to new town manager, Mr. Deon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met with EnviroLink and Mr. Lam, the operator responsible charge, and we had a very good conversation about many of the ongoing maintenance issues, and we developed quite an extensive laundry list of issues that, from pumps to control panels that need to be addressed, and we are systematically and strategically trying to address those issues, so we're getting quotes and moving forward wherever possible with that work.
I know you've been working hard.
These utilities, is this a section we can ask about this violations that we've been receiving?
If you wish, Commissioner Jeffries, or we can wait until the management report, that's entirely, it's up to you.
I just wanna make sure, because I don't like the word another, when you write the sentence, another, and another has tightened up, I don't, those words don't mean anything, so, but we can, we can talk about it, thank you.
Very valid concern, and during the mandatory court, we encourage you to ask those questions.
If I may interject, sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, now, back to item D, no parking ordinance for Hopkins and Branch Street. In your packets, you're gonna have the council action form, amend the ordinance specifically chapter twenty, article two, section twenty-three twenty, no parking. Parking prohibited at all times in designated places, the signs are erected, no parking. The areas that it's mentioning are both sides of North Hopkins Street and the south side of East Branch Street, which Hopkins is the road that comes straight out of the school, and then East Branch is the road that goes this way from the post office. And commissioners, you have some pictures, some maps, I give you all a little bit of time to look through that. We'll start down here with Commissioner Jeffries, do you have any questions about this?
No.
Any comments, Commissioner Lucas?
I'm just sitting here looking at it, and I look at this thing, you know?
This evening?
Yeah. And right there, I guess it's where you have this, where it says no trucks. By the way, there's, it's got a school sign underneath. How often, and how often is this street cars parked there? And usually, how many cars are parked there at one time?
In the daytime, maybe two or three, at nine o'clock, one.
On the street, it is. I know we haven't got Branch Street yet, but it is very happy. I live here, and there's only two that run through something on Branch Street that shouldn't be, and I, I never addressed that before. I do have, about cars parked in the south street all hours of the day, and it is happy. I hope you don't think somebody's picking on you, I think, I think maybe they are, but we have to look out for the secular of those, so.
This is those tough decisions.
It's been there a long time, no parking, all of a sudden, they need parking? No parking? Is it made specially?
How long you been in?
Three years. I ain't had an incident after that in the world.
And that mean, that mean it not gonna happen with that?
Always could be an incident somewhere.
That's right. And the discussion is primary in terms of branch?
How about my daughter, how would she get her access? How would she get her home health care? How would she keep her mind? How would she pick her up? Like I said, this group been there a long time. Ain't nothing changed, except me. That's it. I'm close to the cool. I have calls out there, so you have people up there all the time, looking at cool. So, I mean, it is picking on you.
It's not, it's not in a way that you can extend your driveway, well, part of your yard, extend your...
Well... My, my, my driveway is a complete...
Can't you extend your driveway? No. You can't. No.
I can see it's certainly changed, that you would have a case. But I can see how you could have a case after the school's been there probably over 20 years, and with a no parking sign, and all of a sudden, I'm there on the cool, and now, that's a problem?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I may interject something. You can see by the report I did that these are very narrow streets, really for the amount of traffic that they carry. It's very unusual, number one, to have a, an intersection like this that's less than 90 degrees. You can see how, in your packets in the ORPO, how it makes a sort of a, an inverted L. It's also very unusual to be parked this close to a corner, particularly at a major intersection. And this is a major intersection. So, all of these things are unusual. You can see in this, in this photo how narrow this road is. It's straight, it's one of the few straight roads that we have in town of this size. There's very little room for apparatus or a school bus to get down that road.
And it's the same in Branch?
Same thing with Branch, yes. You'll notice the pictures of Branch, where there's a double parking room. So, if you should have to get an ambulance or a school bus or a piece of apparatus down the road.
Yeah, you know, I, I could see if an accident had been happening. Well, seems to me...
Why don't you sit up to that border, take your own check, and just say, "D?"
Has a base code enforcement, if I'm not mistaken, just had several code violations. If I'm not mistaken, there's generally a good number of cars parked. What you like on the corner, so you allow, try to enough street, sometimes parked in the opposite direction of the flow of traffic. As a matter of fact, this afternoon, I went by there, and there was a car directly in front of your house on the side of the street that didn't even have a license tag on it. And that seems to be a pretty common occurrence to me. And if that was, if, if your daughter needs medical care, I think there's some times here today, I'm not sure an ambulance could turn in that street and get to your daughter.
Like I said, she got home, her care workers coming on. If you got a car with a car, you speak with a tag, that's a separate thing. But to take away access to my daughter? But no reason, but that's what you do.
So, how, how many vehicles do you want?
I'm gonna be a clown. Probably four.
And you say your driveway will only open two?
That's right.
So, I'm looking at this photo, there's three, there's actually three cars in the driveway. There are three cars parked...
And one of them is hanging almost anywhere.
On the street. One of them is in the wrong direction. Now, sir, do you work on vehicles on the side where we can't work?
Mine.
Nobody else?
Nobody else.
Because I, I personally have turned down this road, and the jack handle for the, the car jack is actually laying down out to the center of it.
Okay.
Now, I know that code enforcement has been by several times, and has cited you for violation of cars that aren't tagged, and there's one in this picture that's not tagged. It appears that you're working on vehicles.
But they have tags. I work on my vehicles.
But they're, they're not on it. And to be quite honest, the complaints isn't hot from the citizens. And, as I mentioned earlier, we're elected to represent citizens over in the...
Because of my...
God, please, please, sir. So, the repeated violations, and she said that you had made some improvements, but it seems to me like that one day they'll be gone, and the next day they're all back. So, I'll go ahead and tell you, the last minute I was willing to came with a suggestion to put no parking on that street to resolve the problem altogether. That was my idea. Because we can't seem to get you to comply.
Okay, what?
To keep the cars off the street, it's causing, that's why code enforcement has come. You're working on vehicles, getting rid of, if somebody...
I'm trying to get time, wait a minute. I might change the timing though. That's it.
But some of the vehicles that are in that parking space, that your daughter needs or serves for, vehicles you've got parked there, so you can work on them for boats.
For who?
For different boats, as obviously, you go back in the hoods or...
Which vehicle? It's folks, and which vehicle mine?
There's so many different ones, I see them all the time.
And all mine, since you're old fool, and it's all set there.
I can see six in this picture.
And since you have people that didn't see her? They're not there at night?
I mean, in total, wait, it just, it's, um, there have been a lot of complaints by the citizens. Commissioner Cohen said we have to think about the deal with everyone.
Is that a scenario?
A regular occurrence of a lot of cars parked on the side of the street there, and it seems pretty regular for there to be as good of a car as...
I think I have people...
So, if they don't have nobody to park but on the street? Well, if you have a yard, if you don't seem to have a problem with cars in the yard currently, then why do you park them? If we don't have them, just continue parking like we have them? Now, if you don't seem to mind parking in your yard, obviously, has to be...
We're talking about two different things. We're talking about the parking zone and your problem with my car.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying that you made a point to us that you don't have two spaces in your, at your household car.
That's right.
Okay, but you quite frequently have many more than two cars in your lot, in that your house, but obviously, it's not...
I can drive my car over my door. But my kids cannot. Or, or, or healthcare workers cannot.
You may have to have somewhere else to...
I would have had healthcare workers get to them.
You may have to leave a space for them that day.
Space where?
In your parking pad.
It's where I can park my car.
Commissioner...
Like I said, the street didn't work over. I don't know how this is not working.
Do you have a question?
All right, so we have, um, this came about with the code enforcement, with several complaints from many different residents, and then code enforcement got involved, and they kept the record of all of the violations, and it's exceeded, or it's escalated to a point where it had to come to a council action, where the town council or the town board commissioners has to vote and make a decision on it. They didn't go out and start looking, just with the building, with junk, with all, nothing. They don't go out and start looking for issues to make things difficult for people. They don't go out looking for ways to pick on people. It comes to us, and as Commissioner Cohen said, we have to do what's the best for the town as a whole. A lot of times, they're really tough decisions, and I empathize with you about...
But I did, I did inform you that I have a handicapped daughter there, that she, that people need access to my house.
And I think one of the, one of the concerns is you have three cars in the picture in the driveway, and you were saying that you can only fit two.
But yet, this other car is hanging out on the street.
So, to help, to help you, because I do want to help you. So, what we have before us, like what the procedure, what we have to do is, the board of commissioners is gonna have to vote to make that a no parking zone or to allow you to park the vehicles there. It's not just you, it's all vehicles on Hopkins, and it's all vehicles on East Branch.
Is not.
There's others. There's some, the ones at the next house to yours, too? But then it's also on East Branch Street. And then the third option that they can do, but it's up to the commissioners, is if they want a public hearing, then, or if they wanted more input from other residents, then they could table this.
I can influence other residents other than me.
And gather more information. So, in effort to help you out, that is a third option that the commissioners can do, if they want to gather some more information and hear from more residents, hear some more information from you. So, we've got the council action form. Let's, let me finish up with Branch Street real quick, and then we'll put it to a vote. So, commissioners, also in your packet, you see no parking on East Branch Street. And again, as Town Manager pointed out, it's a very narrow road.
That would be south side only.
South side.
That's not both sides, so that, because there are residents, it's...
Okay.
So, it's basically, as you're looking at the, the curmudgeon, the right side, that's where there are the most driveways, and that would give people an opportunity to still have parking on that street. That is a wider street, by the way.
A what?
It's much wider than, than Hopkins.
Yeah, I did notice that.
So, you're giving them, so they can park on one side?
Yes, ma'am. I got two systems.
I need to have them no side. I travel everywhere, every day.
Commissioners, another tough decision that you all have to vote on tonight?
If I may, the third part of that is prohibiting a left side to the curb parking. So, everyone would park right wheels to the curb. There currently is, if you'll notice in your packet, it would just be straightening the language from the business district, so that would be applicable throughout town. That's a safety issue. It's not usually seen in most communities where you park on site to the curb.
So, section 2025, parking, parking prohibited at all times and designated places and signs are erected, no parking both sides of North Hopkins, no parking south side of East Branch, and then also on the left side directly towards the end of the road. So, yes.
Sir, you're, the health, that they come to help your daughter, what, what times of the day, and how long are they there?
They come different times.
Well, they don't come today.
Might come two, three days.
Mr. Mayor, this isn't a public hearing.
So, what we need to do is put this before a vote, and again, you know, my recommendation to help you out is, there's three options on the table here. They can vote to accept the recommendation to put no parking on those two streets. They can approve you to put, take the park in there, or they can table it and give everybody an opportunity to give them more information here this time. So, commissioners, does anyone like to make a motion on this?
I will say, due to the relationship that I have with Mr. Pete, I would want to refuse myself from this vote.
Good call, ma'am.
Due to the relationship that I do have with Mr. Pete, I would refuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Commissioner like to make a motion? And the recommendation is to amend that parking, that I just read, the parking ordinance that I just read. So, we can make a motion to accept the recommendation to amend the ordinance. We can make a motion to keep the ordinance as is, or we can make a motion to table it for further discussion.
I make a motion that we accept the amendments to section 20-25, the parking ordinance.
Second, second. All right, we have the motion and a second to amend the parking ordinance, and we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any discussion? Motion carries. The recommendation has passed. And East Branch Street, excuse me, and East Branch Street. Tough decisions. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, next item on the agenda is section E. Mike Tolson with Matt Gay and Associates, he's gonna present an asset management plan and capital improvement plan. Tonight, he's gonna go over the waste water side, waste water side, and hopefully, next month, he'll be going over the water distribution side.
Let's see, there's Mike.
No?
All right. I can give the board a... I can just let the, the board know that I reviewed the draft, made some recommendations to Mr. Tolson on bending the draft, and that's what you have before you tonight. It's not the entirety of the draft. There are some appendices that are not included herein. But I would encourage the board to just briefly look through it and see if they, if it meets what they're, if it's satisfactory, and then we can have a further discussion with Mr. Tolson, particularly if he comes in with the water distribution side next month.
And for those of you out there who just want to know, what we're talking about is plans for the infrastructure, both on the wastewater side and the distribution side. Those capital improvement plans that were submitted, and we've got the wastewater side tonight, and then hopefully, next month, we have the water distribution. And these are improvements to water quality in Springhoed. So, commissioners, if you don't have any questions for the town manager on this agenda item, we're gonna move on to new business. Any questions, Commissioner Jeffries? Okay, all right, moving on to section six, new business, paving project. I know that this is something that Commissioner Mukins and Ms. Collins have been working on very hard in past months to get the streets improved and get repairs made to some of the infrastructure repairs that were made months ago. And I'm excited to pass it on to Ms. Collins to talk about this paving project. Commissioner Wilkins, thank you for all your help. Getting this happening.
Okay, so the paving project actually began, we actually started paving quotes in June of 2021. We have to get three quotes when it's a job this size. And so, we got our final quote in October, and then we awarded the project to a contractor. And unfortunately, we suffered time loss because of funding. And then, once we figured out our funding, then the asphalt plant closed. So, thankfully, he called me last week and said he was gonna start, and then today this morning, he was like, "Hey, I'm gonna start today," which was wonderful. And they've already done South Ash Street and Second Front, and he still has West Main, 107, East Branch, which is in front of the post office, and that's it. And it'll be done for this year's project, and actually, it cost us $10,600, which is a lot, but it is a lot. We're so thankful that the project has finally started.
Thank you all for working so hard on this.
Yeah, and like I said, it started in June, so it's been a while.
That's right. And Commissioner Mukins, thank you. And then she was mentioning about the winter months and cold patches. When you go to patch asphalt, if you do cold patches, they're temporary. And so, if you put the cold patches in there, you're just gonna have to rip it up and do it again, and it costs you double. So, it was a very wise decision, physically, to wait for the plant to set up in bad weather, and we had perfect weather to get it done. So, thank you all. All right, next item on the agenda is a giant something. What is it? The Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Ethan Vester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll let that do the... So, I'll kill it, a little bit of time. I forgot my clipper tonight, if you don't mind, I'm gonna stand over here next to my technology. Happy Main Street Week. For those of you that do double duty on the downtown development board and visit, uh, you see Main Street, this week is our conference, starts tomorrow, so you can log in online, it is all virtual this year. So, you're free to log in and gain some knowledge from, you know, from Main Street initiatives. Also this week, I'll invite you out to the Elsa's Line on, I guess that would still be Main Street. This Saturday, they'll be hosting a grand opening for them from a Red and a White, and we'll cut the ribbon around, maybe for those that won't be good for the law. We hope to see you there and enjoy some light refreshments. The Machatsera is already made her own for the door, but I appreciate her and her staff. We had a great walkthrough, some properties on Pine Street this week. Looking at some possible new development coming to some vacancies there. We appreciate all of the work that Nash County Town Development does for Springhoed. But on the topic as of today, we talked about this year's, our 15th Pumpkin Festival coming up, and the Chamber is very excited about celebrating our agricultural heritage throughout the year. Springhoed is home to a couple of people of note, to some of which I do share family with. So, when it was brought to me, a proposal about how to create an attraction in downtown Springhoed this year, celebrate our heritage and agriculture, celebrate pumpkins, which when you drive through fields in Nash County, you don't see. But some hobbyists around the county have definitely taken a liking to it, and we like them here in Springhoed. So, the question was, should we propose the operation we're doing at Charlotte Brown? We all know about the Great Pumpkin. So, the Chamber is proposing the construction of a temporary raised bed player for the growing... So the Chamber is proposing the construction of a temporary raised bed planer for the growing of Atlantic Giant Pumpkin. A 30-foot by 30-foot raised bed planer would propose to be placed in Depot Park on the community loan from March and through October. Our vision is to create a multi-month attraction in Spring Hill. It's often people come up to me, growers around the world, and they're, can we come see it? They want to see the progress, they want to see the pounds going every day. So we have pulled together with community partners to potentially make this happen if we have approval. Our team, my dad, bless his heart, has volunteered so graciously to be our grower. Dad is quite accomplished at this, and he's done it. Out of the top seven pumpkins ever grown in North Carolina, five of them are his. And he also took a world record, so years ago, for the world's largest cantaloupe, as in the picture. And it was only great that his world record was beat out by a prodigy of his that learned his tips and tricks. This endeavor is going to require a lot of resources. We're going to need soil, we're going to need materials to make the raised bed planer, the analysis for the soil and the tissue of the plant to make it viable. Part of the attraction, of course, is going to be to see the pounds going every day. There will be a period of time, for about four weeks, where we can estimate that it will grow 20, 30, and even potentially 50 pounds a day. So American Scale Company out of Bailey is a good partner of ours in itself, this is a layoff. They have been gracious enough to offer for us to actually grow the pumpkin on the scale. We've done this at home before, and it works, it's pretty accurate. I mean, maybe one or two pounds. But the public can come by during the weeks and hopefully walk the sidewalk, visit the shops, and also see the pounds go on. Toyota Tractor out of Windell is potentially joining the Chamber this year. They reached out and potentially going to be a big partner of ours to make this endeavor happen. Not only on the equipment side, but they have an in-house filmed commercial team, which kind of leads into that second or third segment of the project is actually education. There's very little documentation out there about how to grow these giant fruits in the south. So we hope to work with North Carolina Property Extension and NC State Agriculture Department and document this process so that people around the world can see how we do it here in Spring Hill. We've got some other partners, Jones Family Farms has potentially, they pledge their support in providing dirt that comes off of their sweet potatoes. It is sanitary, so we don't have to worry about any cross contamination, as well as ed roots. It's been an organic material that they have a surplus of on the site. And we've nicknamed it Dance Super Dirt. It's pretty incredible, I won't tell you where it's at. People around the world are asking for truckloads of it, and we do sell it. So stages is three main stages. I will be transparent and say I do have an alternative note. And that's at the end of the slide. It's Phase One of Depot Park Innovation. After we construct this huge planer, we're going to have 20 yards of primo dirt in the middle of your park, and I'm not going to take it home. We plan to hopefully construct Phase One of the three planners to match for Phase One of Depot Park. The remnants can also be leveled out across Depot Park, cover some of its gravel, and make it sustainable for the community loan and subseed to grow grass. So step one, this March and into April, we would like for the community to organize a workday, work with local landscapers and the public to remove the shrubs. The fowl bulbs can be harvested and planted elsewhere. Remove the plant borders, the trees, the benches can be saved and stored for future projects, and remove the pavers. After that is complete, we can gray out the site to make it safe and usable for the summer. Construct our raised bed planer, haul in dirt, and actually start growing the plant. We'll probably actually plant it in May, so it will be here on site in May. And then grow it through October, celebrate our 50th festival, and then deconstruct things at the end of the year where we can start constructing brick planters. What we need, we're going to need manpower for the community workday, remove all the planning materials that is already existing. Most of the materials for the actual project itself have already been pledged. And then we've already had most of our partners pledge their services for video production, the live webcam, the platform scale, soil analysis, and sponsorships. We'd really love to put a live webcam on it so you can log in from anywhere in the world and see what does the pumpkin spring up, grow today. And we've got some partners for that. Also provide a layer of security. For the pumpkin. It's, like I said, we've got to get it through that four to five week period, and then it's just too heavy to walk off with, so you're not.
Destroy it now.
Hopefully, people would be responsible enough not to destroy it when you're being watched live. I can take delivery, you can kind of sketch this out. You'll see the yellow indicated square in the bottom corner of Depot Park. That's where I would potentially suggest and put it. Yep, it's a 30-530.
Is that behind that brick plan or where you put it?
It is behind it.
Getting rid of one bit.
Getting rid, yeah, we would, on the workday, I would suggest we go ahead and gray all of it.
While you're there.
While we're there, let's go ahead and clean all of that up.
Nathan, how, where you got that square? Does it overlap where the planters are in the drawing design for the downtown Depot Park?
I looked for my render, I couldn't find it. So it may intersect with one, but we could easily, if I remember the render correctly, those new planters are a lot narrower. They're almost similar to the brick planers that's in place. So we can just shift that up to make sure we had proper clearance for construction.
I know we've got a lot of projects in the town office. You've stood up for it, Chris.
So we can double check the dimensioning on that and adjust it as necessary. Under the old railroad pathway, people still use for traffic randomly, so we would try to stay out of that. How to take care of it? Of course, my dad is going to be leading that effort along with Corporate Extension. So the public would not be invited to actively help with it, just on a whim. There's four H groups and groups out of NC State that do want to come and help and work on it as a learning project. What can you expect to see? It's going to be big, or it's going to be orange? So we laugh, but in the realm of the Atlantic Giant Pumpkins, they're not often orange. But this one, the seed has come from a grower in Minnesota that has donated the seed to us. And he won Half Moon Bay, California Way Off in 2020. Half Moon Bay is almost like the Super Bowl of these way offs. And that is the pumpkin that the seed came out of. It weighed 2,350 pounds.
Wow.
So genetically, it should be big. Just how big, going in the south, we'll make a big determination. So I would expect north of a thousand pounds, potentially. We could always hit a state record, never know.
How many plants do you start with?
We start realistically with one, one to two plants. The plant, again, filling that 30 by 30 space, will only feed that one piece of fruit. That's why they end up so large. So we kind of, it sounds like we have one side of this for downtown. So if we lose the pumpkin or it goes down mid-season, it's a circle of life, you know.
But bad luck.
But hopefully, come October 1st, we all see a ginormous orange pumpkin in the middle of downtown Spring Hill. So how does the town benefit from it? Because we really appreciate you loaning us a big chunk of Depot Park. First off, the Chamber's going to be promoting this. So by promoting this, we're promoting our town. And then additional different materials, easily in the dirt value, you've got over $2,000. In dirt value, that will leave surplus to the town, and you'll be able to grow some really green grass out of it. Any questions? That's kind of a shotgun approach, and I apologize for the blast of information, but.
I think it's great. I've seen a lot of activity in the Chamber so far, just in the past couple of months. New ideas, things you guys are doing. And, you know, I've heard that there's nothing, you know, nothing to do in town, nothing going on. But there has been so much groundwork that has been laid in the past couple of months. Building change in hands, new things, and happy town, new events, new activities. And you look at something that's this simply like, okay, we're growing a big pumpkin, but it's going to be on a big camera, and it's going to get a large audience. It's just like the Eagles Nest, you know, the people that watch a lot of webcam. You know, I guarantee that second, third year people are just going to be watching the pumpkin grow. You see it grow out larger.
And the kangaroo, remember the kangaroo?
You did, you did.
So in my experience, those are the years of Dad and other growers that I've been around doing this, the watermelon, pumpkins, cantaloupes, all these things, it makes people happy.
Yep.
Capital Broadcasting, WRL followed a pumpkin, I believe it was last year, that was grown in the backyard and killed. It only gained like 750 pounds. And I say only because we're used to the larger ones. But it made people across the state very happy. And people followed it week to week on WRL, over a 750-pound pumpkin, the guy's backyard is apartment complex. So what could potentially happen when we drop a thousand-pound pumpkin in the middle of town? And while you're here with kids, shop, visit stores, get the restaurants. Walk the sidewalk, you never know, somebody may say, hey, I want to relocate a business here.
That's how the snowball starts.
It all starts. Potentially, that snowball is going to be orange.
And then I heard the bootleggers at Webb's Mill have a speakeasy at Michael's Show Side, and there's going to be all kinds of chores coming around.
We won't comment on speculation, but it all happens when people come in.
Work together.
Work together, so. That's the plan. Of course, that all hinges on your opinions and your thoughts tonight. If you have any concerns or questions, they have to be in the panel. But I would call for a motion of support or denial for this initiative. I have a question for the audience.
What happens to the pumpkin?
What happens to the pumpkin afterwards?
Yeah.
That's a great question.
It'll be part of the whole town.
Do you have one of those trebuchets and like, you know, find it?
I don't have one, but maybe I can borrow yours. Good news is there are people in state government that are kind of potentially watching this thing. And if it does gain a notoriety, that we hope that it will, the state fair is only two weeks after festival. So, but they could not participate because it would have already been made in somewhere. I would highly suspect that it may make a trip to Raleigh and be on display for all the people to see at the state fair. That's a potential. There is actually pumpkin brokers that will buy these things, and they get shipped up to New York City and become part of the display at your big stores like Macy's and Sexy's Avenue. And they pay about a pound. Yeah, I've heard it's three and $4 a pound, so.
An awesome presentation. Thank you for your leadership to the Chamber, bringing people together.
Just to mention you.
Putting ideas together.
I've got one more idea after this, so I hate to take up more time, but, Mr. Mayor.
Quickly, go ahead.
Okay. We're going to move on. All right, the next.
I just want to say, this is a fantastic idea, a better after after.
It's going to be fun to watch. The other, and Leanne, I may call on you. Leanne is one of our board members at the Chamber. She sent me all the information. I happened to miss the last meeting due to a family issue. But there is a proposal, and we do need your approval tonight for the thing of Auto Classic. The projected date for that is April 30th, which is your classic car show. We'd really love to kind of get back to a new normal, and this is things that we hadn't hosted in a long time. It would be a Joe's Car Show from 9:00 a.m. registration until final departure around 4:00 here in downtown. A projected layout for that event is shades in, how do you call it, like a blue color. Would be parking for classic cars and show cars alike here in downtown. We wouldn't necessarily have to restrict access on most of these roads. We have less thoroughfares on each of them in case of emergency, but also just to move into the car shows. You've got to move things around. We would use parts of Depot Park for registration tents, as well as affordable restaurants. And then the street here on Railroad Street have a lineup of food trucks and local food vendors to support the crowd at the day. Your standard typical straightforward car and auto show. Got classes for Ford, Chevrolet, Mopar, Infra, Hot Rods, and the Ferrari and Racers.
How many cars you think, or how many spaces you have?
I haven't gotten on the street and measured it. I know a typical day you could use it for a hundred cars in town. Some of these car clubs that we could work for, Commissioner Wilkins and I have talked many times about, a Mustang club coming out of Concord, and when they create a Concord, it's at least a hundred cars.
So this isn't really going to put Spring Hill on the map? Because this is going to grow your, you guys are going to market.
If we make it an annual event, it could definitely grow. In the last five years, I think car shows have kind of slipped back a bit. So, again, I think people are starting to hitch for that normality again. So it's a natural way to easily just space out. And just come out and see some small muscle.
Spectacular. So I believe that there is a request for a motion from the Commissioners to approve the use of the downtown area that you highlighted in the yellow split of the pumpkin, as well as conditionally approve the car show. And this would be, vote would be conditional with any question and follow-up that any of your Commissioners might have. So can we get, and thank you again for your leadership and bringing people together and making this happen. Let's bring it up on the map.
You have a big team, Commissioner.
So do we have a motion from Commissioner to conditionally approve?
I have a question first. I see your classes, are we allowing?
What's the word?
Like, for I know it's our time that's here, but no, they don't want the loud. All the car clubs that I do with, they are loud.
Yeah, and I understand while you're moving a lot of these, they're traditional muscle cars. For in town, there will be noise, again, for Saturday and during the day. So it's a little bit more, I guess you would say, acceptable. I would probably discourage reckless driving, of course. You know, revenue is burning out, school and tire, all of that would not be acceptable. Motorcycle people will rev engines, drive some parked places like that, I could see potentially happening. But I don't see that being the normal.
That's part of the experience, that's how I feel.
If they're paying for it, because they have a budget for parking around either two, what they all want to include. Right now, they're paying $20 an entry, there would be a big percentage out of the pre-show.
Another something you're very passionate about, also a few for your office.
What streets do you have to go down?
So we would restrict railroad main, high, and that. So your typical festival district. We would need to get the approval for.
I... In the future, if I made a statement, if we could work with the Chamber and other organizations in advance of these votes so that we could tweak the plans so that the Chief could have a chance to look at it. And that would save us some time to get down.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think if the next development, we're reading from the Chamber, we'd bring forward a event policy that we would have to, that we adopt. After we, we voted to make it ours, but it's somebody that thinks about making sure it's in the joint. So that we are put up single and I've got all the details.
Special handplaces?
Yes, yeah. Yes.
So we can table it and get the additional details with the motion for initial approval while we're getting the details. While we're getting the details, we have to make the recommendations, not that we need conditional approval, but to work out the details.
The way the Chamber, if we want to, the motion to conditionally approve, both the I have to set change off for the board.
All right. Motion carries, conditionally approved. Thank you so much for putting it up on the map.
For sure.
All right, next item on the agenda, Town Attorney Report. And as he gets there, Commissioner Jeffrey, this is...
Well, there's nothing to report. The development agreement, the deed for that, I drafted it, sent it to the Attorney for Public Water Services and it's not, the fact deal is not closed yet, but I've worked on it because I called my office, it's already active, we're still making a file. So I was going to be calling the Attorney for Public Water, but they didn't see it out of the world after they called me this morning. So there's still work on it, but it has not closed yet. So that's that. And I just would mention that we had two recusals on votes that really unless you have a cuneary or an interest, financial interest in the vote, I can look this up to be 100% sure, but you really consider abstaining, abstaining on vote is considered a vote yes. So you're still, you're pretty not vote, but it's not the same as a cuneary or something.
I mean, so...
Correct.
What's the, we have, what's the...
Yeah, well, yes, if, if the parking issue was all some financial impact on you, then you could refuse yourself. But if you have some other relationship to the situation that's being voted on, that you don't want to vote, like I say, I won't look at it myself, just to be 100% sure, but I just, I just clarify that issue there. Since it kind of happened twice today, that's why we mentioned that, that a board member can't just abstain from voting, is considered a yes vote. If, the other situation that comes up in this context is if somebody needed to leave the meeting, that the Commissioner just got up and left, then they're not voting or any vote that came up would be considered a yes vote. Whereas if the board made a vote and eschewed the town board member and they were officially, they had officially left the meeting after vote, then there, it would be as if you were at the meeting. Just flag that. I mean, if that ever comes up, you know, I'd be glad to work with the board.
That's good information. Can we get that in an email?
Yeah, absolutely. Because I, I can look that up myself, make sure I'm, I haven't had it read.
Yeah, twice.
Yeah, well, that's, and you're, and you're free to, you know, because I'll vote, but it's just, if it was a contested vote and it was, it was, you know, two commissioners voted yes and two commissioners voted no, it may have commissioned a board member not voting and it had to vote in the future.
Very good. Thank you for the report, Compton, and according to the clarification, you know, regarding that. And next up, Tony Jimenez, your report.
Um, half the function is going to be done by the 15th, next Tuesday, I believe, but 15th. We'll start flushing, it's at 10:00 PM and we'll flush until 2:00 AM in the morning. Smoke testing did begin, keep going up here, it's going to begin, but it has a little bit ahead and we got off on the last few pants that have come up and we're not able to do it. But we're also now going to begin this Thursday and Friday and be in touch with Mike Tolson and Mr. Peter Alford as well. Your local horse clock will be done by the next meeting. I don't expect you to have been working on that, so, last week. We've got your whole quarter somewhere here and your oil reduction, 3.2 million gallons. We did a sewer tap for the new house that's coming in at the very end of the first week. Did that and we're getting ready to do hopefully this week if all parts come in, the earth is back there, so we're trying to get a ship from my state here to get a tap at the, the duct.
Is there any meter going into 101 West Branch? I think it just came out Friday.
I don't know. But I, I can't even, I hope you see that one here.
I got a quick question. How do we sell 3.2 and treat 1.9?
About that? Um, the waste water, yes. That meter, I think, supposedly it was recalibrated in October, I believe, I'm not sure, but I think something is off with the meter and it needs probably recalibrated again.
That actually came up in discussions with Mike Tolson and...
CFP?
No, as a result of his working on the, on the AIA, he discussed that that channel may need to be cleaned and it's not just the meter that needs to be recalibrated, but thorough cleaning. And I think we engaged somebody to actually do that recently, so, so that I talked about a couple of months ago?
Uh, to an extent, but not really. But that, that thing, it goes through a channel, there's a circumambler and it, the water flows through it and the meter bounces off the top of the water and reads the distance and that's how it measures the flow and it's...
I believe it's infrared.
Yeah.
Right? So no amount of calibration will correct that, correct that unless that channel gets cleaned.
And then the year-to-date is 6.1 versus 14.7, so there's a...
Yeah, the year-to-date information is not correct.
Meter as well? The meter as well?
No, no, no. That, she, she has all that stuff on a spreadsheet and she could not get the spreadsheet to come up the other day and she was printing out the report.
And then the, I know a lot of you buy up on calls this month about the smoke testing and so that is for infiltration of the water going into our sewer system where we're basically paying to treat rainwater and our wastewater system is being overtaxed by rainwater. And so the smoke test, that shows us where the holes are so that we can go in and make those repairs and that's a lot of times where I will see some discrepancies between water sold and wastewater treated, so.
And a lot of that work that you're, you're cleaning out in your yard, you know, sort of, and the smoke testing, that's...
Important as residents, that we finally look at our cleanouts, make sure that the caps are on them and that they're not broken. That's our responsibility as residents. So find that little white side to the cap on it and make sure the lid's on it next time you're out in front yard. Next item, is that it?
That's all that's...
Any questions, commissioners? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Police Chief's report.
For the month of February, we had three incident reports, 113 total costs per service, 14 vehicle traffic stops, 104 security checks, five traffic accidents, and three reported street lights been out.
I did have some residents come to me about some street lights and so I asked them to put them, you know, like a list of where they're at. Because I know that you guys run around, you should see them everywhere, so I'm not sure where they're at, but that was a concern that a resident brought up to me.
Well, if someone contacts you...
Any issues?
Yeah, if someone contacts you, just tell them to give us a call or send us a Facebook message or something like that.
Can they contact PD?
Yeah, just give us a call or just send us a Facebook message on the PD page and just put the phone number.
Okay.
Most likely it's already been reported. I mean, it takes up to two to three weeks sometimes for them to come along.
Yep. And it is so refreshing to see so many residents trying to help the town. You know, just so, so much help recently from residents, it's great to see that. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't belabor the point by reiterating the report, I just want to, aside from Michelle moving the hatch painting project forward, we did receive the draft audit actually this weekend and have, have done a review and some of the findings need to be edited prior to coming to the board, so we'll be having a meeting with the auditor next week to discuss those findings. Nothing, nothing serious at all. Also want to mention that we do have the RFQ out for engineering services for the $3.7 million ARPA earmark. Also want to mention that Michelle today posted on the state's procurement website an RFQ for next year's audit firm, so we've moved those projects forward. The other outstanding item for the board's consideration, we did receive four proposals on leaf and limb, pick up yard debris and mowing. You have a small bid tab in your packets. The lowest was top notch at $81,000 and the highest was here, it's at $462,000.
Wow.
So it still exceeds the, what we anticipated to be the budget, which is closer to $60,000. So, and for $81,000, we could, we could hire two town staff and a mower for that much than $81,000. So, I mean, that's your, obviously to having your own public works department even at that low price.
I'll do it for half that.
Certainly for $462,000, you could have a very nice public work staff.
Wow. I want to point out that item two in your manager's report was updating land development regulations with code right planners. This was something that the town manager has taken upon himself to get outside consultants to help us look at our current zoning ordinances. And one of the things that would help, help us with is making sure that situations like that may not come up in the future with future developments. And so he's been going through things with a fine tooth comb and he's really, he has really been working hard on it. And so he has got some outside consultants that are going to look at these ordinances for us. So thank you, Town Manager, for that. Commissioner Jeffrey, do you have questions?
No, just, I can talk to Andrew another day about, I just, it bothers me when you see another, you know, just a violation.
Well, Adam, I think Mr. Nelson's left, but certainly these two were procedural, right? We're not following the state's regulations on testing. We have received other, no, we actually, the town has been in violation on the water supply side for disinfecting materials. And so we're working with Environment to try and resolve that. That's been outstanding for two, three years now, Michelle. So I, I, we are doing the best we can in working with Environment currently to, to get the town back in compliance, in at least in the immediate future.
And please note, I've told all the commissioners, and the water is a huge topic of discussion with them. It's on their mind all the time. I know it's on you guys' minds. They're working on it, Town Manager is working on it, Ms. Tyler is working on it. So it's, and also to touch real quick on that $3.7 million, the process, that $3.7 is going to help with some of the infrastructure and water repairs. And in that process, I think you said we're at the point where we're requesting to have a plan put together. We have to, where we have enough process.
We need a licensed engineer to move forward to develop those plans, that's a state requirement. There's no way to get around it. We have a, we will, we have developed a very robust qualifications-based system so that we can work with an engineering firm that is responsive, that has the credentials in the best interest of the residents of the town of Spring, hope it are. I would also like to say that regarding the utilities, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I left me here now. I apologize.
What's that?
The thought escaped me.
Okay.
I was going to say I apologize.
So procedurally with the state trusting it that money, we have to hire a firm that's going to come up with the plans. And then we submit those plans to the state and then they'll start giving us money and as we prove capacity that we successfully manage that money and fix problems, then they'll give us the remainder, more of the $3.7. And I can tell you that he is working very hard on McLean Street.
On the reason for it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and others for bringing McLean Street to my attention, 212 McLean. The washout there is actually quite bad, interrupting that water line. So solicited quotes from two firms, one declined to provide a quote, we did get a quote from Ralph Hodge for $10,000 and change. I would appreciate it if the board would approve that appropriation to make those emergency repairs, to basically remove any of that debris, clear out that swale, put in a drop inlet, do some regrading and armor that shoulder so that we can protect that water line and roadway itself.
So we need a motion for amendment to the budget to expense, how much did you say?
$10,600.
$10,600.
That's what the thought was.
And does everyone know what we're talking about on the budget?
$10,250.
Okay. So we will need a motion from the Commissioner to amend the budget to allocate those funds to make those repairs. So, okay. All right, any, all favors out? All those? All right, motion carries. Thanks for keeping an eye on these.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, anything else you'd like to add?
What's the board's wish on public works?
I think, we know about public works. Mr. Colm?
You had, or you brought before that you had some discussions with the town administrator for him, said he had any further discussions with him?
Uh, we have, I'm sorry.
His name's John.
John Edwards, yeah. I have not had further discussions, but subsequent to that, Commissioner Colm, I've had discussions with North Carolina Rural Water Association. We actually had discussions on commissioning a rate study. We had discussions on what a pay structure would look like for public works personnel. We had discussions on equipment purchases and different scenarios that would minimize the upfront cost for the town. So we have had those ongoing discussions and we expect some, some more discussions going forward. And they are working very closely with Uncity as well.
Yeah, because I was going to say, I, I've actually worked with John, he's got a house and they've made a lot of progress in implementing their own public works. They've got people with certificates, everything they need, basically. They're pushing environment out. I think there's some other issues involved there. They should help us navigate that.
One of, one of the things that has come forward in our discussions is if the board, with the board's approval, I think we could push forward with getting more information and, and then putting together a budget proposal for this upcoming year in terms of feasibility.
Does that need a motion?
Obviously, there's something up there in our tree. Uh, honestly, there's no doubt that they're in our tree.
And, and you can be well assured it will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any questions from the commissioners, Commissioner Wilkins, if you can come in? Commissioner Colm? All right, thank you for the report. And you can go to his office, there's a big, huge tiny racehorse, and it's like a family troop, right? And at the very top of it, you got all these problems that he's found in, in town and you've got lines coming down, all these solutions that he's working on and, and, uh, and I hope his energy doesn't, doesn't not start attacking himself. I hope his energy is, um, all right, next item on the agenda, other business. Any other business with commissioners? All right, and the final item on the agenda is adjournment, do we have a motion to return?
That's what I do have, um, an item. I received quite a number of calls over the weekend and I respect for the individuals that were involved, I would not, um, name any names, however, I just want us as commissioners, mayor, town manager, we are citizens here as well. If we are at Burley King, Cool Farm, it doesn't matter where we're at, we still have to be respectful to the individuals who work in these stores. Um, the person that this happened to was very upset, so I just want us to be mindful that we are elected by the citizens and we can't talk to any of these citizens any kind of way. We have to respect them as they respect us.
Do you want to go in more detail, Bill?
Um, I will not go into details out of respect for both parties, but we just have to ensure as representatives of this town that we are being mindful when we are speaking to citizens, no matter what, even if we're mad about certain things, we can talk to people any kind of way we want.
That's very good. All right, if there's nothing else, then we need a motion to return. All right, motion is adjourned. Thank you all for attending, I appreciate it. That's not too bad.
Tonight's Spring Hope Town Board meeting is presented by the Southern Nash News and Tar River Studios. Tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency. The Spring Hope License Plate Agency is recently under new management and features short lines and a friendly staff. Dealer work is always welcome, notary services are available and copies can always be made. Wildlife services, hunting and fishing licenses, boat registrations and boat title work is also available. Visit the Spring Hope License Plate Agency on Ash Street five days a week, Monday through Friday, nine o'clock to five o'clock. Once again, tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency.